I'm in public comment. Do you have a public comment? And, uh, is the next thing on the agenda to vote for an attorney? Madam Clerk or Mr. Hewitt, do you have anything to add before we turn to the commissioners to discuss?
The only thing I would add is that I don't think that y'all have defined how you process, you know, you're gonna vote, you're gonna debate, or just what that is.
I could speak personally. I was assuming that we would just have a general discussion of some of the criteria that we use to evaluate and then, um, you know, present the people that we believe are the candidates. And that would be so the public knows what we did to make a choice, you know, what characteristics or experiences that we looked at, just general stuff. And then say who you want.
By a secret ballot or?
I don't see a reason we have to be. If people want to be secret, I'm happy to state out loud who my person is. Um, I don't think it needs to be secret.
If you can't do a secret ballot...
Well, it needs to be. It becomes part of public.
It has to be a written ballot.
A written ballot with your name so it's public. I didn't mean secret, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I said that.
Yeah, me too. But, I mean, I have no problem just going down the table. If people don't feel comfortable doing that, they can always say they prefer to write it.
Any other commissioner want to make a comment of any kind? Do you want to go down and give each commissioner an opportunity to speak directly to the subject matter? Or do you want to go ahead and vote, or what you want to do?
I mean, I've gone through, I've gone through these, you know, in detail. I've gone through in each and every one of the attorneys that we interviewed. And I'm ready to make a decision.
Well, we're gonna, I mean, Pat, you want to?
We can have a special.
Yeah.
I'm okay. I'm more than okay.
All I was gonna say is that I looked at every one of them after we interviewed them in a sort of a grid and against my notes, looking at overall experience, particularly relevant experience, availability, understanding of a community like Holden Beach. What I termed adaptability and available. Everybody's available. Everybody said they'd be available, so that wasn't an issue. But, you know, every one of them, let's just say, lacked something in terms of level of experience with the Army Corps. They all admitted that. Development fees. In terms of understanding of a community like Holden Beach, clearly the two locals did. I also believe Matt was particularly tuned in coming from Nags Head in his background. I don't doubt that the Richardson firm also understands small communities, although they've not been with the beach nourishment community yet. And then the adaptability, where I look at just how people strike me in terms of their quick-footedness, their learning experience, and the way they look at things to bring in experience to make decisions. You know, there I had some differences.
Sorry.
Wow. There I had some jostices in how I rated people. And overall, that ended up being sort of the kicker for the person that I chose. So that's what I looked at for individuals.
Yeah, I focused on experience. And Grady Richardson obviously had the experience of representing a municipality similar to ours. Matt was pretty impressive, but lacked the experience, so that's what my focus was on.
Yeah, I had interviewed four years ago Grady Richardson. And as we went on, I'd have had no difference in my opinion. At that time, I would have voted he and one of them, they were good. I think all of the candidates that submitted their applications are qualified. And I don't think that we would make a mistake with any of them. I think they're good. They could probably adapt. What they don't have, they could get quickly with us. But my final conclusion was I would stick with Grady Richardson that I thought before was the right guy. I think he's good. I think he's, I've been watching what he's been doing with other towns. But that's what I'm gonna vote for here.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't actually say who I picked in the, I actually went between the two. And for something that struck a chord, I actually put Matt at the top.
I'd say that, you know, we all interviewed all of the firms. We all listened to all of the firms. And it was clear from the discussion, the answers, that each of the, each of the firms had a certain level of knowledge on certain issues, some more than others, and then less knowledge on other issues. None of them, including the Richardson firm, have any knowledge when it comes to, which they're literally admitted, any knowledge with nourishment. Although they do represent other similar located communities. They have never dealt with a nourishment type of project, which would require dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers. Mr. Marshall, very knowledgeable, but a single practitioner, doesn't even have an office. I think there's some point where we would need no support, so he's out there all by himself. I think there's a point where we need somebody that has a little bit more support. And the other thing is, Mr. Marshall, he's retired, so I don't know how, you know, how much you would really want to be involved in some of the issues that may come up that require a very intense work over a short period of time. Mr. Green, very knowledgeable about the community, but rigorously admitted no experience at all with Camel or the Army Corps of Engineers. At the end of the day, I thought that Matt Nichols was the person that I would choose to represent us. One, I think he's eager to get on board with handling a town. He's handled a lot. He, again, he doesn't have vast amount of experience with Camel or the Corps. But he does have a good amount of experience dealing with that on individual, representing individuals or towns on specific issues. So he does have the basics in that. And I really don't see the need to pay the increased money that Grady Richardson will get if we retain them, simply because they don't have any more experience on a nourishment program than Mr. Nichols does. And that's really what my focus is wanting to be on for hiring an attorney.
Once again, I've gone through. And again, I'd like to thank, go on the record thanking the attorneys for attending this session and going through the interview process. There's a couple of them that I certainly agree that are qualified. There's a couple that lack sufficient experience, in my mind, to make a decision. The cost factor, I've gone through here on the Richardson one. And I believe that there is an additional increase, Mike, at $325 per hour. But if Mrs. Carpenter, right, her hourly rate would be $250 per hour, which I believe is the same rate as Noel. And I don't know whether we're ready to vote. And if we decided on how we want to vote, put it on a motion or sign a document and send it to Heather, give it to Heather.
Make a motion.
I would just like to echo what Mike said. It's not that Richardson isn't a strong firm. Indeed, they are. And if we had a legal challenge of some sort, I would be glad to have them on the list of attorneys that, you know, if we needed additional help, we would reach out for. But for what we need, for our town attorney, general tasks, do we need that level of firepower? And if you go back to what was issued, there was the general cost of hourly rate, $200 an hour, was part of what the physician description was. And I'm going to say again that Richardson, yes, they have lower rate for one of the attorneys, but it is still higher than what we put out as the preferred rate. And do we need that level for our day-to-day town attorney types of duties? If we're, you know, I, again, I'm not arguing about Richardson not being qualified. Are they perhaps a little bit more than we need on a day-to-day basis? And with that in mind, do you need to retain them for a town attorney because they're high-powered? Or can you have somebody a little bit less and know that we can bring in high-power if we need them? And there's something to be said about being somebody's only town, quite honestly. And somebody who's eager to get into being a town attorney, which was one of Matt's comments. So that's all I have to say. I agree that everybody could be our town attorney. I just want to make sure that we hire the right level of what we need when cost is not the top consideration, but is, you know, one of the later considerations you make.
Anybody else want to say anything? Because I have a couple of things I might say if you allow me to speak. The town, we've been with a guy named Grover Ford, who provided his services free of charge for a long time. And we've been through many town attorneys. And I've been here for all of them. We've had some good ones, we've had some that weren't working particularly in the bridges, or it's not a concern. Where I see the town of Holden Beach today is, um, we have had reasonable representation in the last few years with current attorney. But I want to remind the board that if you want high-powered representation, we have the group from Riley, Spruill, who is one of the most powerful attorney organizations in the state of North Carolina, that can represent us in virtually anything. And we already have a relationship with them. And they made it clear that they're available with all of their staff for whatever our needs may be beyond what we are benefiting with Mike McIntyre and their sand projects and so forth. So I wonder if indeed the board wants to consider to go out and hire someone else who we have no experience, we have no relationship with. And then how would we determine what we would want that organization to do? And also the possibility of that organization not being able to provide what we may need to be represented with in a situation that we might not even be aware of today, it might show up a year from now. Whereas Spruill is already in a relationship with us and already can cover virtually all the bases that might come up. I know they did not apply for what we're talking about now, so they have on the high-power end anything that we may need. So I would simply reduce my comments to saying, he can provide us, as one of you used the terms, you know, on a regular, routine basis, which is not necessarily exciting and overly challenging legal work. Because looking back at the town's history, the years and years that we've operated without getting into trouble legally with anyone or group outside of the town and/or any government, simply by holding our meetings and doing business and calling our town attorney as needed. But somehow we have graduated, which I really don't understand, how we have graduated to the point that we need an attorney almost at every gathering to get their blessing and so forth. For some reason, I have more confidence in the board itself than maybe some others who feel uneasy about operating. But the cost of these people coming to sit in a meeting for hours, and what they charge as travel time or whatever, seems to me like the taxpayer were paying a lot of money that we maybe don't necessarily need. So without rambling on, I would simply reduce my comments to a very simple one. And that simple one would be to ask, who can get the most done for the town without a whole lot of charges and a fanfare? Who can, on a day-to-day basis, pick up the phone and get things done? If we need heavy firepower, we can determine who out there in the legal world can provide us the specific best representation for that specific problem that we're addressing. And for some reason, I would encourage the consideration to be given to someone that has some tie to the town of Holden Beach. My experience is that the people that are simply putting us on the client list until their contract runs out is maybe not necessarily what we need. I would just encourage the board before you vote, who can get it done, send us the cheapest, who knows the area? And one of you made the comment that all four can probably do it, being town attorney and whatever. And I agree with that. They all can serve as a town attorney, fill in the spaces and send the bills and so forth. All five of us, all six of us have our opinion that they could do the best. I'm sure you make the right decision. So you don't mind who it's gonna be. But I also realize, without my saying it, and I'm gonna say it anyway, as soon as the new board takes their chair, they can undo everything that you've done here today, which I was hoping that we would ride out with what we had and let the new board decide. We gotta decide to move ahead. And that's well and good because that's our decision. But I will certainly support whoever decides to. With that, how do you want to vote?
I guess I'd just like to comment on the panel. There's two points. I agree with, I think in your way and my way, we've kind of echoed one another's thoughts in that I believe Matt Nichols can handle the day-to-day confidently. He wants to. And if the point, if we reach a point where we need someone else with more expertise, we can always retain someone for that specific purpose, which we've done in the past since I've been on the board. Secondly, I agree with the mayor that in the best of all worlds, we could put this off until our meeting in November or December. But Noel has punted on every issue now that's pending. She was supposed to come forward with some assistance on drafting language for the revised, proposed revised parking regulation. She wants to leave that to the new attorney. There's another matter that's on the agenda for Tuesday night where she suggests we give that to the new attorney. So I think in a way, we're forced to make this vote. But I would say that I would prefer if we had had this discussion at a regularly scheduled meeting where, thank you, Mrs. Bloom, I'm glad someone showed up, but instead of every one person, we might have ten. But at least it would be representative with the regularly scheduled meeting rather than doing it at a special meeting.
Anyone else?
Well, when we originally started doing this, I also had hoped that Noel would stay with us, because I thought that this would best be left to whatever the composition of the new board is in December. And I simply wonder if there is a way for us to get through two months and leave the hiring of a firm to the new board in December or January. I know it's a bit of a daunting for that to be on their plate, their first meeting or two, but it has happened in the past. And so, again, I am ready to vote for someone, and I am happy to vote for someone. But I do have to ask whether or not it is possible to get through two months without having a town attorney at the meeting. Is there a way of having someone temporary if we must have someone here? You have to have, you have to appoint one. I don't know if you can have months where you don't have one. Town clerk, is it legal to have some months of in-between that you don't have an attorney?
I thought that she was, I thought she was still serving.
She had originally offered to stay on for the next few months, but then when the board chose to move forward, I mean, like, she can't come to the October meeting because she, she had offered, but I'm not sure where she stands with the next couple of months. I'm sure she would be able to answer any legal questions that we have, because she still is assisting us if we have any questions. So, but she, I don't know her availability if you find it necessary to have an attorney at the meeting.
But to answer the question, Pat, it's not a requirement to have an attorney appointed?
Every, yeah, for every meeting?
I mean, you had vacancies.
Yes. Well, I mean, then the question is, would it be better to leave this to the newly-composed board when it is voted in? And in no way is that being negative about the firms in front of us, but it is a question of whether or not it's best to leave it to the new board.
I'm gonna make a comment. I would prefer to vote as we had planned to do. We interviewed the people. We were told by Noel we should have another attorney. We should get it done before that meeting. If there is in fact a new board, constituted new board, that board is in liberty to go out, get new companies to bid, take the mayor's proposal, do whatever it wants to do. If it be a new board, can have a choice to do what it wants to do. We would though be solid with an attorney between now and then. They wouldn't get pressed with that in timing. That's our plan, so I would recommend we just take the vote then.
But it will probably only be the November meeting? Because they cannot be between now and Tuesday up to speed on whatever might be needed for Tuesday.
Also, I guess I have, David, before we could retain them, we had to send out contracts, have them signed, yada, yada, yada.
That was a question that I had for the board. You need to ink a letter of engagement with them. And so how, assuming you made a selection, how would you like that to be handled? Would you like me to handle that administratively? If you did it today, would you like to do that as an add to the agenda on Tuesday? But you need to have a letter of engagement to do that with.
So, I mean, it's always good to talk things through, right? So if we, if we do choose to select an attorney today, then we know that the first time that attorney can give us any advice is that...
Just after we sign the letter of engagement?
At the November meeting.
We could do it at the October meeting. We signed the letter of engagement, it's signed, he can be here and then take over.
We have to, well...
It can be the first order of business.
Talking about doing the letter of engagement at the meeting on Tuesday. And we don't know, we don't know if we say the X firm, that the X firm will be available on Tuesday. This is right, so we don't know. So when I came in here today, I was ready to vote and just give you my opinion and vote on it. But now that we've talked about it a little, I really think that we would be better off and better served, and the community would be better served, if we waited, and no matter who gets elected, if we waited until after the election to make this decision. Because we're only gonna get the benefit, this board is only gonna get the benefit of having the person, if they're chosen today, sit at one meeting, which will be the November meeting. In December, the new board takes place, and they would be able to vote on the attorney that they best feel would be able to represent them for the next two years. I think that's fair, whether it's the five of us, or it's five different people who are sitting here in two months.
Well, another concern is if you hire someone or offer them the job today, how much are they gonna know before Tuesday's meeting or their next meeting? I mean, how are they gonna get up speed on something? I don't know, but anyway.
So if it's a vote, anybody have anything else?
I agree with you.
Then...
Joe, you got any of the...
No, really.
So then I would make a motion that we table this issue until after the election.
I would second that.
My mind's going blank on the procedure here. We've got a motion to table.
Madam Clerk, is the agenda allowed for this motion?
Yeah, the agenda does.
Yeah, because it's the, you're, it's having to do with the attorney, so I wouldn't see why not.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with it. I know there are instances where a motion to table can stand, and then you have to have a motion to take it off the table and vote on it. But I need some help on that.
I think, I think that Mike's motion was with date time certain. That's when the table, and it includes after the election. So I think that's sufficient for date time certain. Or if you wanted to be more specific, you could say, you could do a date time certain.
Yeah.
So that's, whenever an item is, it's been my understanding that when you move the table to something...
That would be a voting motion. All right. So we have a motion to table it until...
I'll revise it, a motion to table it until the first meeting after the investiture of the new board.
All right, I have a motion to second to table it until the new board takes office.
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I was just, you know, we went through this process for a couple of months now. And knowing that it's, you know, the timetable before, so, and I'd like to, you know, it could be a possibility that the new firm could make the Tuesday, and we have two agenda items that are still needing to be addressed, so... This decision should have been made months ago then, if that was the case, rather than go through this process.
Well, another technicality would be that if this board, say, all of you get re-elected, you could, Madam Clerk, you, the board, could vote to take it off the table and proceed with hiring immediately, couldn't they? I mean, they could revoke that vote.
Right.
And I, one other thing in response to Pierre, I agree, we've been talking about it, but sometimes... sometimes that's what helps us make a good decision, right? We initially think something is going to be the right thing to do, and then after we discuss it, we realize that we have a change of opinion, and that's what's happened in this particular item to me. We thought we're doing the right thing, we went through the right process, we interviewed everybody, so we would have a good feel for why we wanted to hire someone rather than doing it on a whim. But at the end of the day, when I, when I think about it, I think it would be even more beneficial just to put it off. And as the mayor points out, we could make a motion at the November meeting. I still think we're only going to get the benefit of having the attorney for one meeting, that'll be November. So if we table it now and we decide that we're all sitting here again, or the majority of us are sitting there, then we can table it and have the people on board in December so that we just lose one meeting.
The four, the four firms that have been considered, they haven't been promised a date certain of an answer, have they?
Not to my knowledge.
Any ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no?
No.
Three to two. All right, how do you want to vote?
Just go down.
I'm in favor for an oral vote.
Yeah.
All right. Peter?
I vote we retain Brady Richardson's firm.
I vote we retain Matt Nichols' firm.
Brady Richardson.
Nichols.
Richardson.
All right, Madam Clerk, if I can count, that's three to two.
Okay.
For Richardson. Any further business to come before the board today?
I would follow up on how would the board like me to carry forward on the administrivia tale of hiring the attorney devoted to security services that is still subject to a letter of engagement being executed. Would you, would you like for me to do that administratively under my authority, or would you prefer that it be done more formally with an item added to the agenda on Tuesday night?
But you recommended before that you could prepare it and we could vote on it.
No, I would, I would have, I would have them to prepare their letter of engagement and propose it to us.
And then vote on it at the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Versus the other option, was you do, you prepare it?
I would prefer not to do that. I would prefer that it come before the board. I just offered that up as options.
Yeah, I'd ask that it be possibly done at our next meeting, Tuesday.
Okay. Then that's what we'll do. I would like to point out the, once we, once we do that, then I guess they'll be on the Assuming that there's not something awry in the letter of engagement. Okay. I will further assume that, that you, y'all would like us to communicate, the clerk or I, to communicate with the Richardson firm advising them that you've taken the vote today, selecting them, and tell them to get us a letter of engagement for consideration on Tuesday night. And I'll further assume that y'all will add that to the agenda, assuming that they will attend.
Yes, yes.
All your suggestions.
Okay, I think we've got a consensus there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anything else? I had told the clerk that I was going to be unable to attend this meeting today. I'm supposed to be in a meeting in Asheville, literally as we were speaking here this morning. I'm supposed to have been in a meeting in Raleigh this afternoon. And because of the sincerity and the importance of this meeting, I chose to be here. So hopefully in the future, whether it's a commissioner or a mayor, that the board will certainly give consideration on matters as important as this to possibly give consideration that everyone will be able to attend. Anyway, I'm here, and the town suffered from one meeting in my absence. The other meeting is business on my part, but anyway, I'm glad we've got this behind us, and I hope it's the best decision for the town, as history will show. So with that, is there a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
Say.
We adjourn.